Ordinance, and I should warn you, it's nineteen pages. So, be patient, please.
Bear with me. In the year 2013, an ordinance to establish a bill of rights for homeowners in the city of Lynn. Section one, purpose: unsecured and unmaintained vacant properties, foreclosing properties and foreclosed properties present a danger to the safety and welfare of public safety offices, the public, occupants, abutters, and neighborhoods, and as such constitute a public nuisance. This ordinance is enacted to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the public, to protect and preserve the quiet and german occupants, abutters, and neighborhoods, and to minimize hazards to public safety personnel inspecting or entering such properties. Section two, definitions. For the purpose of this article, the following words shall, unless the context clearly requires otherwise, have the following meanings. Certificate of compliance shall mean a certificate issued by the ISD chief to the responsible party for a vacant and/or foreclosing and/or foreclosed property upon compliance with the provisions of section thirteen. Certificate of mediation completion shall mean a certificate issued by the mediation program manager upon good faith, definite mediation if a mutually agreeable commercially reasonable alternative to foreclosure cannot be reached. City shall mean the city of Lynn. Commercially reasonable alternative shall mean an alternative based on a comparison of the net present value of receiving payments pursuant to a modified mortgage loan while the likely financial recovery from out-of-forclosure alternatives to the anticipated net recovery following foreclosure incorporating an assessment of the borrower's current circumstances, including without limitation, borrower's current income, debts, and obligations. Days shall mean consecutive calendar days. Entity shall mean a business organization or any other kind of organization, including without limitation, a corporation, partnership, trust, limited liability corporation, limited liability partnership, joint venture, sole proprietorship, or any other category of organization, and any employee, agent, servant, or other representative of such entity. Eviction shall mean any action without limitation by foreclosure sale purchaser, of which of a residential property which is intended to compel an occupant to vacate or to be constructively evicted from such residential property. Fair market rent shall mean an amount equal to that established by the most recent United States Census Bureau American Community Survey of the city of Lynn, which shall be fair market value only for a unit of comparable size in the area in which the residential housing is located. Fire chief shall mean the chief of the Lynn Fire Department who bought his over a designated name. Foreclosed property shall mean a property on which a foreclosure deed has been recorded until such property has been purchased from the mortgagie or its mortgage servicer. Foreclosing property shall mean a property on which mortgagie or its agent has filed a complaint with Lynn Court Superior Court pursuant to Massachusetts Soldiers and Sailors Civil Relief Act as amended through statute nineteen eighty-eight until such time as a foreclosure deed has been recorded in the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds. Foreclosure shall mean termination of a mortgager's redemption in property by action, by equity, and/or for power of sale. Foreclosure sale shall mean foreclosure of a mortgage pursuant of residential property pursuant to a power of sale in a mortgage in as described in Mass. General Law, chapter two forty-four. Foreclosure sale purchaser shall mean a foreclosing owner as defined below or a person or entity who purchases residential property from a foreclosing owner and not intending to reside or have a family member reside in such residential property as a primary residence. Foreclosing owner shall mean an entity that both (a) held an own or mortgage loan in the property at any point prior to foreclosure of the property or is a subsidiary, parent, or agent of, or otherwise is related to any entity which held or owns a mortgage in the property at any time prior to foreclosure of the residential property; and (b) holds title to this property that is quieted, foreclosure sale, or by any other method of foreclosure, and holds a security interest in three or more mortgage loans. For the purpose of this definition, the phrase "holds title" shall include any entity which holds title in any capacity, directly or indirectly, without limitation, whether in its own name, as trustee or as beneficiary. Good faith, definite, shall mean each party to mediation is present, has decision-making authority to negotiate and agree upon a commercially reasonable alternative to foreclosure, provides required documentation, and actively participates in mediation process. Homeowner, see definition of mortgager defined by this section. ISD director shall mean the director of the Inspection Services Department of the city of Lynn. Just cause shall mean at least one of the following: (a) the occupant has failed to timely pay last established rent prior to the foreclosure sale, and no rent has been established; reasonable use and occupancy charges shall be established by fair market rent, but only if the foreclosure sale purchaser notified the occupant in writing on or above the time of the recording of the foreclosure deed or a reasonable time thereafter of the amount of rent or use and occupancy that was to be paid in whose payment was to be paid; (b) the occupant has violated an obligation or covenant of the occupancy other than the obligation to the rental possession upon proper notice and has failed to cure such violation within a reasonable time after having received written notice thereof from the foreclosure sale purchaser; (c) the occupant is committing or committing to exist a nuisance in or is causing substantial damage to the property or is creating substantial interference with quiet enjoyment of other occupants; (d) the occupant is convicted of using or permitting the units of use for illegal purposes; (e) the occupant has refused to provide reasonable access to the property to full of the property to the foreclosure sale purchaser for the purpose of making necessary repairs or improvement required by the laws of the United States of Commonwealth or any subdivision thereof for the purpose of inspection as permitted or required by agreement or by law or for the purpose of showing the rental housing yield to a prospective purchaser. Mediation conference shall mean the formal discussion and negotiation undertaken by the parties in good faith effort to negotiate, agree upon commercially reasonable alternative to foreclosure and held in the city or at a location mutually convenient to the parties, both the mortgager and the mortgagie or its mortgage servicer must be physically present at the mediation conference unless telephone participation is mutually agreed upon and mediation program manager certifies that the mortgager has been made aware of his or her right to an in-person mediation conference. The mortgager shall be allowed to have a lawyer and interrogator and up to three additional persons of his or her choosing present at the mediation conference. The mortgager shall be notified of this right at the time of the mediation conference scheduled by the mediation program manager. Mediation program shall mean the foreclosure mediation program established in the city pursuant to this article described in section four. Mediation program manager shall mean a neutral, non-for-profit organization, attorney of qualified third party, experienced in the mediation and foreclosure process, familiar with all the programs available to help homeowners avoid foreclosure, knowledgeable of the mortgage foreclosure laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, having no ownership interest or management interest in residential housing in the city other than their primary residence. The mediation program manager shall sign a user agreement with the city authorizing the receipt and use of personal and financial information for the purpose of the mediation program only. The mediation program manager shall ensure the security and confidentiality of any and all information received or exchanged under the program consistent with applicable federal, state, and city laws. Access to such program information shall be limited to those offices and employees of the organization who require the information to properly perform services under the mediation program, and that the organization and its offices and employees may not access, modify, use, or disseminate such information for inconsistent or unauthorized purposes. Mediator shall mean an individual (a) whose training complies with the qualification standards for neutrals specified in the guidelines for training mediators adopted by the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts pursuant to Rule A of the Uniform Rules for Dispute Resolution, and (b) who has completed training on foreclosure mediation, and (c) who has working knowledge of all the federal, state, and city programs available to help homeowners retain their laws. Mortgage documents shall include the promissory note, including any blunders, additional pages, and other evidence of all endorsements, mortgage loan agreement assignments, reported and unrecovered, powers of attorney granted by the mortgagie or homeowner to entities acting on his behalf and any other documents evidencing or securing a mortgage loan. Mortgage loan shall mean a loan in the form of a promissory note to one or more natural persons or to a nominee trust or residential trust on behalf of one or more natural persons for non-commercial purposes and secured wholly or partially by a mortgage on residential property in the city which is the principal residence of one or more borrowers of the loan, or their family members, or in the case of a nominee trust, one or more beneficiaries of the trust. Mortgage services shall mean an entity which administers or services or at any point administered or serves the mortgage loan provided, however, that such administration or servicing shall include but not be limited to calculating principal and interest due on the mortgage loan, assessing the fees for cost onto a mortgage loan account, collecting regular payments from the mortgager, acting as an esperoagent for the owner of the mortgage loan or foreclosure on a mortgage loan in the event of default. Mortgagie shall mean an entity that is the present holder of the mortgage loan. Mortgager shall mean a natural person or residential trust who received a mortgage loan secured by a residential property located in the city and for whom such residential property is his or her principal residence. Net recovery following foreclosure shall mean a monetary value that includes but is not limited to projected costs from (a) delinquency, interest fees incurred by the date of foreclosure sale based on the amendment of Massachusetts foreclosure process; (b) processing all legally required actions to foreclose and percentage loss from foreclosure sale; (c) meeting all sanitary code requirements; (d) property maintenance; (e) eviction; and (f) other ownership processes or projected sale or resale to a third party purchaser. Occupant shall mean any person or group of persons, including the mortgager, who legally occupies residential property prior to foreclosure sale. Party shall mean the mortgager and the mortgagie or its mortgage servicer. Person shall mean any individual corporation, partnership, limited liability, partnership, limited liability company, trust, or other entity. Property means any real property, residential or commercial, or portion thereof located in the city, including building or structure situated on the property. Residential property shall mean real property located in the city that is either single-family dwelling or a structure containing not more than four residential units that shall also include a residential condominium unit or a residential co-op unit. Responsible party shall mean every person, entity, service, or property manager, or real estate broker, or which alone or separately with others, one has clear charge or control of the property, including but not limited to any dwelling, dwelling unit, mobile dwelling unit, a positive land vacant or otherwise, including a mobile home park, or any administrator, executor, trustee, or guardian of the estate, of the holder of legal title; or (two) is a mortgagie of any such property who has filed a complaint with the Lynn Court Superior Court pursuant to the Massachusetts Soldiers and Sailors Civil Relief Act as amended through statute nineteen eighty-eight, including in success or assigns; or (three) is an agent, trustee, or other person appointed by the courts invested with possession and control of any such property; (four) is a mortgagie who has made entry on any such property pursuant to the terms of the mortgage in order to make it clear upon mortgages' failure to do so. Vacant property shall mean a foreclosed structure or building not legally occupied. Unit or residential unit shall mean the room or group of rooms within a property located in the city which is used or intended for use as a residence by one household. Section three, mandatory mediation before foreclosure on residential properties, notwithstanding any general and special logic contrary, all mortgages who have sent the notice of the right to cure pursuant to Mass. General Law, chapter two forty-four, section thirty-five A pertaining to residential property in the city shall be required to engage in a mediation program as set up in this ordinance. Section four, establishment of a mediation program. The city is hereby empowered to establish such mediation program in accordance with this ordinance and promulgate additional regulations as necessary appropriate to implement such a mediation program utilizing mediation program manager approved by the city solicitor to mediate between the mortgagie and mortgager. Such mediation shall be facilitated by a mediation program manager approved by the city solicitor according to procedures established by this ordinance. The city solicitor is hereby authorized and empowered to enter into an agreement with the mediation program manager. Section five, spoken mediation program. Mediation program shall provide mediation prior to all foreclosures of residential property in which the mortgager's family resides. The program shall address all issues reasonably related to a foreclosure on residential property, including but not limited to all commercially reasonable alternatives to foreclosure. The parties are required to make good effort mediation as defined in this ordinance. Mediations conducted pursuant to the program shall use the calculations, assumptions, and forms that are established by or made available through (一) federal to cause an insurance corporation published in federal to cause an insurance corporation's loan modification program guide available on the federal to cause an insurance corporation's publicly accessible website; (二) the home affordable modification program; (三) the modification program that a mortgagie may use which is based on accepted principles of the safety and soundness of the institution recognized by the National Credit Union Administration and the Division of Banks; (四) the federal housing authority; (五) similar federal loan modification program. (六) The city solicitor's office shall provide for needs of evaluating and selecting qualified mediation program managers. The city solicitor's office shall also provide for means of assessing and evaluating annually the city's mediation program, including reports and data related to (一) the number of mortgages who are notified of mediation; (二) the number of mortgages who attend mediation and who receive counseling and assistance; (三) the number of certificates of mediation completion issued under the program; and (四) the results of the mediation program, including the number of loans restructured, number of principal write-downs, total value of principal write-downs, number of interest rate reduction, and to the extent that such information is available; the number of mortgages who default on mortgages within a year after restructuring; and the number of short sales and any of alternative foreclosure. (七) The city solicitor's office may terminate a mediation program participation in the mediation program for good cause. In such case, the mediation program manager shall deliver to the city solicitor's office all records and information in its possession for appropriate preservation and storage. Section six, confidentiality in mediation. Accepted financial information otherwise permitted by law should be disclosed. Any financial statements or information provided to the city or its approved independent counseling agent, (八) is provided to the mortgagie or its mortgage servicer, the mortgager, during the course of mediation in accordance with this article. It is confidential and should not be available for public inspection. Any financial statement or information required to reasonably facilitate the mediation shall be made available as necessary to the mediator and to the attorneys or representatives, if any, of the parties to mediation. Any financial statements or information designated as confidential under deception shall be kept separate and apart from other papers and matters not the subject of the mediation. No mortgagie or its mortgage services shall be required to disclose information or violation of Mass. General Law, chapter ninety-three H and two oh one C M R seventeen. No information provided by the mortgager in the course of mediation may be used by the mortgagie or its mortgage servicer or its agents at a subsequent legal proceeding. Section seven, notice. For the purpose of mediation program established by the city, mortgagie or the mortgagie shall send a copy of all notices given to the mortgager pursuant to Mass. General Law, chapter two forty-four, section thirty-five A G, which relate to the residential property in the city to the city of Lynn. Care city solicitor, Lynn city v. Free City v. Square, Lynn, Mass., within ten days of giving such notice to a mortgager. The receipt by the city and notice of or of request for mediation from the mortgager made in fifteen days of receipt of notice pursuant to Mass. General Law, chapter two forty-four, section thirty-five A G, shall constitute the beginning of the mediation process as set forth in this ordinance. At the time, the city solicitor shall notify mortgagie and the mortgager of their rights and responsibilities under this ordinance regarding mediation. If the intent and purpose of this ordinance mediation commenced, no later than forty-five days of the mortgager receiving notice of his or her right to cures provided in Mass. General Law, chapter two forty-four, section thirty-five A G and H. The city solicitor's office shall refer the matter for mediation to an approved mediation program manager, which shall have the responsibility of signing the mediator and scheduling the parties to immediately commence mediation pursuant to this ordinance. Mediation shall proceed with the parties' good faith effort to negotiate and agree upon a commercially reasonable alternative to foreclosure. The mediation shall continue without delay until completion, and shall in no way constitute an extension of the foreclosure process, nor an extension of the right to cure, period. Notwithstanding the limitation in the previous sentence, mediation may be extended by mutual agreement. Section nine, administration of mediation program. The mediation program established by this ordinance shall include and not limited to the following steps: (a) the parties shall participate in mandatory mediation conferences at a location mutually convenient to the parties, all parties, and other respective representatives. The president of such mediation conference must have authority to enter into any agreements renegotiating the mortgage that is subject to the foreclosure or to otherwise resolve a pending foreclosure. (b) Said mediation conference shall be scheduled at a time and place to be determined by mediation program manager, but not later than forty-five days following the mortgager's receipt of his or her notice of right to cure under Mass. General Law, chapter two forty-four, section thirty-five A G and H. The parties will be sent notice under mediation program by certified in first-class mail of the party's last known address, if any, or if none, to the address which the tax collector last sent the tax bill for the property. The notice shall contain the following declaration on the first page in English, Spanish, Cambodian, Russian, Greek, Vietnamese, French, Asian Creole, and any other language which mortgagie or its mortgage servicer knows is in the mortgager's primary language and any other language deemed appropriate by the mediation program director. The city of Lynn has a mediation program that may help you negotiate more affordable mortgage payments, avoid foreclosure. However, there is no express implied guarantee foreclosure will be avoided. Have this notice translated at once and contact us for help. If a mortgager does not respond to the initial notice, the mediation program manager shall to the extent possible utilize additional outreach methods to supplemental mail notices. (c) Prior to the scheduled mediation conference, the mortgager shall be assigned a city-approved loan counselor or a highly-approved housing counselor by the mediation program manager, and no charge to the city or mortgager. If the mortgager is already working with the city-approved loan counselor, no assignment is necessary. However, such loan counselor must agree to work with the mortgager during the mediation process in accordance with the provisions of this ordinance. The mortgager shall be encouraged to attend a group orientation available prior to the mediation conference. Such orientation shall be scheduled as necessary at times inconvenient to the mortgagers. Interpretation shall be argued to the mortgagers ahead of time provided that the orientation is deemed necessary by the mortgager. The following shall be invited to participate in the signed invitation information of the orientation. Mediation program manager, one or more local legal services organizations, or one or more community organizations operating in the city that provide advocacy and care to kids, support for distressed homeowners. The orientations shall familiarize mortgages with a full range of options that are available as commercially reasonable alternatives to foreclosure with the foreclosure process and with obligations mortgagie or its mortgage services under the mediation program. (t) The mortgager and mortgagie or its mortgage services shall cooperate in all respect with the mediation program manager. The mortgagers shall complete any and all loan resolution proposals and applications as appropriate and provide evidence of all current income. The mortgagie or mortgage services representative shall bring and make available to the mortgage documents as well as detailed accounting of the outstanding balance across the fees. (e) If after two attempts by the mediation program manager to contact the mortgager by mail, the mortgager fails to respond to the mediation program manager's request to appear for the mediation conference, the requirements of this ordinance shall be deemed to be satisfied upon verification by the city-approved mediation program manager that the required notice was sent. If these conditions are met, a certificate of mediation completion shall be issued immediately by the city, by the mediation program manager, certifying that the mortgagie or its mortgage servicer has satisfied the mediation requirements of this ordinance. (f) If it is determined after good faith effort that the parties cannot come to a mutually agreeable commercially reasonable alternative to foreclosure, such good faith effort on behalf of the mortgagie or its mortgage servicer shall be deemed to satisfy the requirements of this ordinance. A certificate of mediation completion pursuant to this article shall be issued immediately without delay by the mediation program manager, authorizing the mortgagie or its mortgage services to proceed with the foreclosure in accordance with the terms of the mortgage and the relevant statutes. Mediation program fees, section nine. The city is hereby authorized to enact, and from time to time revised by ordinance, a reasonable and appropriate mediation registration fee to be charged to the mortgagie or its mortgage services for the services intended to administer the mediation program established under this ordinance. Any fees assessed pursuant to this ordinance shall not be charged to the mortgager. The mediation fees will be paid directly to the city, who will then use these fees to pay for the mediation program. It is intended there will be no cost of this mediation program to be borne by the city. Section ten, recording of certificate for foreclosure by sale. After a foreclosure by sale of a residential property in the city, and either prior to or simultaneous with the recording requirements of Mass. General Law, chapter two forty-four, section fifteen, a solid shall file the certificate of mediation completion with the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds. The city solicitor shall periodically request from the Southern Essex Register of Deeds information regarding attempts to record pursuant to Mass. General Law, chapter two forty-four, section fifteen, without complying with the recording requirements of this ordinance. Section eleven, recording of certificate for foreclosure by entry. In the case of foreclosure by entry of a residential property in the city, either prior to or simultaneous with the recording, the requirements by Mass. General Law, chapter two forty-four, section two, a copy of the certificate of mediation completion shall be filed with the Southern Essex County Registry of Deeds. The city solicitor shall periodically request for the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds information regarding attempts to record pursuant to Mass. General Law, chapter two forty-four, section two, without complying with the recording requirements of this ordinance. Section twelve, mediation program violations and penalties. A mortgagie or its mortgage services failure to comply with any and all sections three through eleven in this ordinance shall result in a fine of three hundred dollars payable to the city for each instance of the violation to be charged to the mortgagie or its mortgage servicer in accordance with the Mass. General Law, chapter forty, section twenty-one. (b) Every calendar day of noncompliance with section three through eleven in this ordinance shall constitute a separate violation, such as the penalties described in this section, up until the end of the right-to-cure period given under lawful notice pursuant to Mass. General Law, chapter two forty-four, section thirty-five A G and H. Said fine or fines under deception shall be recovered by indictment or complaint pursuant to Mass. General Law, chapter forty, section twenty-one. No fines pursuant to this ordinance shall be charged to the mortgager either directly or indirectly. Section thirteen, securing and maintaining vacancy, foreclosing and foreclosed properties; maintenance and registration of vacant, foreclosing, and foreclosed properties. (a) All responsible party, all responsible (slips over). (one) Maintaining property in accordance with the Massachusetts sanitary code of Massachusetts State Building and Road, all specialized codes incorporated therein in any city ordinance concerning maintenance of properties in the city of Lynn zoning ordinance; and (two) provide the fire chief and the ISD director with the name, local, within twenty miles of the property, address, and telephone number of the responsible parties can be contacted in case of emergency. The responsible party shall cause a name, contact number to be mounted on the front of the property as may be required by the ISD or ISD director; and maintain liability insurance on the property and furnish the ISD director a copy of said certificate of insurance and provide a cash bond acceptable to the ISD director in a sum of not less than ten thousand dollars to secure the continued maintenance of the property until no longer vacant, foreclosing, or foreclosure at the time by this ordinance, and remunerate the city for any expenses incurred in inspecting, securing, marking, or making sale such property in and after the law, the property in which it is located. The portion of said bond shall be retained by the city as a fee to administer this section. Pursuant to this section, each responsible party must also provide a bond for each vacant foreclosed property it controls in the city. (five) The cash bond requirement shall be waived if responsible parties headquartered in the Commonwealth or is not a subsidiary or an entity headquartered outside the Commonwealth and has reported at the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds. (five) Confuse foreclosure deeds of the residential properties in the city in the prior calendar year. (six) Notify the ISD director and the fire chief or ISD director. S D director and the fire chief of writing when the property is sold or transferred contestually after compliance with the provisions of section thirteen. The I S D director shall issue a certificate of compliance. Said certificate shall be valid for the length of time prescribed by the I S D director and noted thereon, provided, however, to be, shall be subject to continued compliance with provisions of this section. b) Maintenance and registration of properties where I S D is deemed a property to be abandoned by the mortgagier but is still occupied. If I S D determines that a property has been abandoned by the mortgagier but occupants remain in conditions of district care threatened health and safety of the occupants, I S D shall notify the responsible party of conditions of district care in writing. The responsible party will then have fifteen days to comply with the requirements set forth in section thirteen a. c) Maintenance of vacant properties. In addition to the requirements of section thirteen a, the responsible party will, within fifteen days of property becoming vacant, shall one, as may be required by the fire chief by one set of space utilization floor plans or any building on said vacant property with the fire chief in one set of plans with the I S D director, the responsible party shall certify space utilization plans exactly twice annually in January or July, and two, bring in a vacant property to satisfaction, moving due, and, or, from the vacant property to satisfaction, the fire chief has the materials as their term is declined in Mass General Law's Chapter twenty-one k, as the statute may be amended time to time, and three, at the discretion of the I S D directors, secure all windows and door openings in each of the properties. All unauthorized entries continuously according to the United States Fire Administration National Assumptive Initiative orders. four, provide a twenty-four-hour on-site security personnel on the property and post no trespass, and signs on the property, and maintain the property in accordance with this section, free of overgrowth, trash, and debris, including stacked water and structures unmaintained and destructive, sound condition, and signs and markings pursuant to this section. Signs and markings shall be applied on the front of the property and elsewhere as the fire chief and I S D director may require or at above the second floor level, which should not be placed over doors and windows or other opening. All signs and markings shall be visible from the street when requested by the fire chief. The I S D director shall be cautioned of the size and area of the property. Signs and markings shall be minimum of twenty-four inches by twenty-four inches, with lights, two-inch mittles, and heavy reflective background or painted with reflective paint in contrasting colors. Signs and markings shall be applied directly on the surface of the property, and shall use the date of posting and the most recent date of inspection by the fire chief and I S D director. Properties without certificate of compliance, the I S D director or agent thereof may enter the property to inspect, and further may seek court orders to enter upon the premises to secure, clean, remove, and cool the stacked water. expenses. The responsible party of a vacant foreclosing or foreclosed property shall, if fails to obtain a certificate of compliance as required herein, shall be liable to the city for expenses incurred by the city in securing such property, removing rubbish and overgrowth, and/or for abating stacked pools of water. The I S D director shall provide a responsible party with a written statement of all processes associated with the inspecting, securing, and marking the property and removing rubbish and overgrowth or abating stacked pools of water. If the responsible party fails to pay or reverse the city within seven days of notice, the city shall draw down upon the bond paid by the responsible party required in section a, eleven, above. If there is no bond available, the I S D director shall record the notice and claim on the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds, all laying court to pack forth with, and shall have the right to file a civil action in the Northeast Division Housing Court to establish a lien on the property as the balance due. duty to maintain the property. No responsible party for a vacant, foreclosing, or foreclosed property shall allow said property to become or remain unsecured or to contain an accumulation of rubbish, to contain overgrowth, and to have stacked pool of water. If it appears that any vacant or foreclosing or foreclosed property is unsecured, contains rubbish, overgrowth, or stacked pool of water, the I S D director shall send written notice to the responsible party, requiring the responsible party promptly secure the property, remove the rubbish or overgrowth, and the stacked pool of water. If the responsible party fails to comply with any order issued pursuant to section thirteen, the I S D director may immediately seek to obtain a proceeding secured by the bond filed pursuant to section thirteen a herein and shall enter upon the premises to cross the property to be inspected, secured, marked with further may, seek court orders to enter the premises to secure, clean, remove rubbish and overgrowth, or abate any stacked pools of water, or otherwise according to the Sanitary Code. nuisance referral. All unsecured vacant foreclosing or foreclosed property shall be immediately be referred to the I S D director for a determination relative to whether the properties are nuisance or dangerous pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter one thirty-nine and pursuant to procedures promulgated thereunder. Notice, notices required pursuant to this section shall be served in one of the following manners: one, personally on any responsible party or on contact person specified by such responsible party pursuant to section thirteen a two, or left at the last unusual place of board of any responsible party who is an individual, or free sent to a certified or registered, sent by certified registered mail return receipt requested to a principal place of business within or without the Commonwealth of any responsible party who is an entity, if such principal place of business is known, or for the contact person identified by the responsible party pursuant to section thirteen a two, or sent by certified registered mail return receipt requested to any contact person specified by the responsible party pursuant to section thirteen a two, at the address specified by the responsible party pursuant to section thirteen a two. enforcement. Violations and penalties. Failure to comply with any provision as section thirteen shall be punished by a fine of three hundred dollars pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter forty, section twenty-one d. With each day of violation constituting a separate offense, section thirteen may also be enforced by civil, criminal, process or non-criminal process, including a gentle relief. The I S D director and fire chief shall be enforcing persons who peruse this section. section fourteen. Preventing unnecessary vacancies of certain foreclosed residential properties in the city. Post foreclosure argument or eviction notwithstanding any general or special laws. Contrary, a foreclosure sale purchase or purchaser shall not evict an argument except for just cause unless binding purchase or sale agreement has been executed for a bona fide third party to purchase the residential property from said foreclosure sale purchaser. penalties. Any foreclosure sale purchaser who evicts or attempts to evict occupants in violation of any provisions of this ordinance shall be punished by a fine of not less than three hundred dollars. Each eviction done a violation of this ordinance constitutes a separate offense. Jurisdiction of interest to court, essence superior court, and Northeast Housing Court shall have jurisdiction over an action arising from this ordinance, and shall have jurisdiction and equity to restrain any such violation. No argument shall be evicted in violation of any provision of this ordinance. It shall be a defense to eviction that the foreclosure sale purchaser attempted to evict an object in violation of any provision of this ordinance. conflict of laws. Any provision of federal law relating rental units owned or operated subsidized by the federal government which are inconsistent with or contrary to the provisions of this ordinance shall supersede the provisions of this ordinance. When not inconsistent, provisions of federal law shall apply in conjunction with the provisions of this ordinance. Exemption. This section shall not apply if the foreclosure sale purchaser is a lender of a mortgage allowance headquartered in the Commonwealth, is not a subsidiary or an entity headquartered outside the Commonwealth, as reported at the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds, five or fewer foreclosure deeds for residential properties of the city prior in the prior calendar year. All ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall take effect thirty-one days after its final adoption is advertised. In the event of any part of this ordinance shall be held invalid. Such invalidity shall not invalidate a whole ordinance, but remaining provisions of this ordinance shall not be effective thereby.
Okay, counsel, please. Uh, just been a motion made. We need a second.
Second.
Second discussion. Counsel Capano.
Yes, I, I love, there's been a lot of powerful testimony, and I don't want to repeat. People have been here a lot of times. I just want to say, there's a lot of people that have worked on this ordinance, you know, for a long time, and, um, you know, I would love to have an unanimous vote, uh, and if it needs to be changed, it's down the road, and we need to improve it or tweak it, um, I think we could do it, but, you know, I think enough people have looked at it, and I think we have a really solid ordinance here. Something that, I mean, if there was ever a vote that we would take that really expresses the will of the people in win, this is the vote right now. You know, when you read, when you read the item, you look at the back of the item, you see all the foreclosures, but you don't always see the faces, you know. It makes a big difference. You know, we spent a lot of time, rightfully so, in things that I support, like the downtown, uh, the waterfront, but a lot of that stuff has to do with, um, bringing new businesses here or new people here. The other thing about this ordinance is we have a chance to do something for people that actually live here right now. Having said that, I mean, like I said, I'd like to see an unanimous vote, and, um, I think with all the hard work that's went into this, we have something solid that we can do.
Mr. President, I'll be brief, but I want to thank, um, you, Counsel Phelan, Counsel President Phelan, Counsel Capano, for your leadership on this matter. I wanted to thank the United for change, for the job that they did. I want to thank all the attorneys that were involved. I want to recognize all the people who came here tonight, and dozens of people who wrote me, called me. We talked, and I read your letters. I heard you, and we all support you.
Right. Counsel Barton.
Mr. President, I call for a vote.
Counsel, Counsel Net.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to show you something. You know, I got letters. I've been writing letters, so I'm in favor of this ordinance. I hope we are all agree on this. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just do what Rick Ford said.
Thank you. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. License committee.
Name of your committee. Consent. Consent. Any favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
And we have three orders from the Finance Committee that they request an emergency. I'll read them together, and you can separate them. Transfer the sum of five thousand dollars and zero cents from the account of reserve onto the account of IT payroll and I T O T. Transfer the sum of seven thousand five hundred dollars from the account of election transfer account to the city court payroll account. Transfer the sum of thirty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-five thousand from the account of reserve onto the account of election precinct offices, city clerk outside professional expenses, city clerk all day.
Counsel, which the counsel, take a motion approved. Is there a second? Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Absent Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Present Counsel Ford.
Yes. Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
Any other emergency? Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Absent Counsel Creighton.
Yes. Yes, Counsel Seer.
Present Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Feller.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
Any new business? Motion for adjournment, all in favor?